I've got five o'clock, Columbia in order. We have all boardrooms here present except for Bruce, including our two student representatives. See, we had a few additions to the agenda. I'll let you go through those.
Sure can. So, the 2022-2023 calendar was added for approval. Rachel Braun's notice of assignment has been updated with a signature. We received two updates or two additions to be added on today, which is a resignation and a leave of absence.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda's presentation?
So moved.
A motion from Cheryl?
Second.
Second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both say no?
Carry.
And we'll go to public comment. I do have one public comment request form from Amy. Amy, Joel Gabi. I will just read through the quick guidelines. Yep, yep, if you don't mind. Quick guidelines as we do in, you know, any attempt at a public comment. All participants must be held, are will be held to the following guidelines and standards. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Even when communicating difficult issues, it's important to remain respectful and dignified in our communication. A five-minute time limit established for each participant. In the event that that, that multiple people wish to address the board on the same topic, the board will ask the group to identify one person that will speak on behalf of the participants. A maximum of 20 minutes will be available for the public comment portion of a board meeting. In general, the board will not respond to the information received during public comment. In order to communicate in an effective manner, please keep public communication to two or three main points and articulate those points as directly and clearly as possible. Lastly, the superintendent will follow up with all participants of public comment. Okay? Alright.
Thank you all for having me speak tonight. I am, of course, speaking about the unrequested leave that is indicated in tonight's agenda. I wish to address first how I came to know about this unrequested leave. Just yesterday morning at 9:30, colleague Connie Ludwig stopped by my classroom in the elementary to ask me if I knew that I was on the agenda for tonight. I had not been informed. I had a planned meeting with David Orline at 12:30 yesterday, but as per his email, it was just to discuss just a class. At that point, he asked me how it was physically, mentally, and then shared with me that the plan was to recommend to the .5 for ESL. So I was not informed until yesterday at 12:45 PM. It is listed as being lack of pupils. I understand that our numbers for foreign language are down. The, just a class that was going to be discussed is a sixth-grade class, which Dave Wilkie is not licensed for anything lower than seventh grade. And it's supposed, it's being designated as a sixth-grade class. As far as lack of pupils in relation to ESL, it is my next point for myself. I have shared some documents with you. Some of them do have student names, so I ask for their privacy as you always would. But my school year started with 10 ELs starting the year, with three of them being new-to-English speakers. Throughout the school year, I have had students come and go every month relatively at different levels. At this point, I have 18 current ESL students, and nine of them are new, new English speakers. I have shared with you my enrollment numbers from previous years, but with five minutes of time, I am not able to go through all that information with you. I wish to mention April 2013. I met with the school board at that time while I was doing my licensure to be able to like teach with a license for the ESL. At that time, I had designated that I was not being in a, I'm sorry. I was not being provided the amount of time to service our students appropriately. Nothing came out of that discussion. Things continued as, as was. In the documentation that Ms. Bullard may mention is actually an old schedule from a meeting I had with principals in October when I was finding that my load with, at the beginning of the school year, I was to be .5 ESL and .5 MTSS for reading in the elementary and middle school. In October, numbers had already risen, and I requested a meeting to discuss, and you'll see this in the, in the shared documents, again, named students with their test scores with what our Painesville policy,
five minutes left, just sorry.
Painesville policy, how much time they should be getting. At that time, they didn't follow up with a meeting. It was MTSS to use that time to work with ESL students. Therefore, at this time, I am working full-time in teaching K-12. I have students K through eight and then an 11th grader. Lastly, with not having much time, this last point is something that is not in my salary, so it should be treated as an aside, that Maria Thompson left our district as our designated interpreter, translator in the fall of 2019. At that point, I was asked to translate and interpret for parent-teacher conferences, for communications with families. I have not had any consistent pay agreement for interpreting and translating. Last two points.
Give you, just give me one second.
The most common, most recent translating events was your district survey that I was called to a meeting with Ms. Bullard, and the paperwork was there that had my phone number for them to call, and I was not informed. It was at that point, everything was printed with families to call me. And lastly, the public comment form this evening. I had families that were planning on coming, but if they had come, there is not a public comment form in Spanish to accommodate them. Thank you.
May I ask a question even though the five minutes is up? It's not a comment?
Or it can be later with the, the, when it's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Go on, do you, start with you Cheryl, bills.
Yes, I had a chance to look over the bills on Monday. Given my age, I'm learning new things all the time. Do we know that we have to recertify our football helmets?
Actually, I did.
I didn't know that. They have to go back to the helmet company and they tear them apart and look at them, look them over and recertify them or reject them. Interesting. But other than that, everything was just normal business. I mean, that was normal business. Everything was normal.
New to you, normal.
New to me, normal.
Okay, sounds good. And Janelle, personnel items.
Absolutely. So the first item kind of on personnel, we have career increments. The career, career increments are determined by, via each contract and whether or not they have reached the correct number of service days per year to qualify for the service career increment. Overloads are the final set of overloads for quarter four. You'll see a leave of absence. The final contracts, you'll see the personnel handbook and contracts in this agenda written in this board meeting today. Those are the final contracts with the exception of our transportation, which will be negotiated for next school year. The hires that are recommended are for, you'll notice, our fourth quarter for Edie Baker, who's, or Becker, who has been doing our intervention position. You'll notice our custodian. We've got Olivia Haynes, who is doing our, she's working in pause. You'll notice Ellie Hamilton, who's been hired as a, recommended as a long-term sub, and Amanda Rugemer, who is the interventionist who we offered a position to last year, and she wasn't able to be re, released from her contract. So she is released and available this year. You'll notice resignations as well. Some of those, we've got most, I think, probably the most notable that I would like to acknowledge is Betty Schmidt, who is resigning as a paraprofessional with the intention of, of serving as a certified sub for us. So that'll really, in the next year, will be incredibly helpful. So those are the primary consent agenda items for you today.
Anything specific to donations that you want to call out?
Yes, yes, I do want to call out on the donations. So we did alter the format for donations so you can see. And then we'll have this as a running tab. We'll be able to keep track. So we have received a number of donations through the Donna Aaron's memorial, and I, I think that was one of the first, last board meeting was one of the first times we talked about that. And so that has been, those donations have been coming in as well. The other thing that's kind of a unique donation that we received was a pallet of, of Clorox cleaning wipes. We had an individual who had access to a pallet of, of those and, and asked if the school could use those, and so we certainly accepted that donation as well. You'll also notice that the, the Frank, Si and Dick Dillon charitable fund has been, has come in as well. And you'll notice that there is a Dollars for Scholars acknowledgement in there as well.
Good. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say no? Carry. Communication items, back to you, Janelle.
Alright. So administrative report, I think I added a, a communication in there from Natalie Uch around our FFA students who have been at the state convention the last couple of days. It's pretty, there's, there's two things that are in there that are pretty exciting. One is the Parley team, which is the parliamentary procedures team. They've had a nice showing. They will find out on Tuesday evening, this evening, how they fare. The other piece is Ben Bugby received a, a state award and will be going on to a national competition as well. So that was pretty exciting information for, for our FFA chapter. And that's been a, one of this year was one of the, the greatest showings that they've had in a number of years. So that was exciting. I wanted to let you know, so this evening, we originally had scheduled a, a presentation about all of the tech tips and tech tools that our students have been working with. And I think the, probably one of the most amazing things about that is that it is, like, it is K-12. And so Colin was, because of the positive weather, able to go over to a track meet, and it was their first actual, like, real track meet. And so he asked, can I, can we put this off a little bit? And I said, absolutely. So be on the lookout for that because I think it's, it's truly amazing what our students are able to do and access through our technology. Culture and climate update, as of tomorrow, all of our students in grades four through 12 and all staff members will have had an opportunity to engage in the World Cafe model. So again, as a reminder, those five questions that we asked, or five areas to discuss is how do we experience culture at the Painesville area schools? How do we experience the climate? How, what is our ideal, or how do we demonstrate or show? So again, using the Cafe model, they were able to draw, describe whatever it looked like to them. And then how do you become a conversation stopper? So again, the intent behind that question when the Culture and Climate Committee met was because they recognized that back in 2019, when this activity took place, there, people sometimes had an ideal culture and an ideal climate in mind, and sometimes conversations just didn't lend themselves to that ideal. And sometimes those are hard to, hard to redirect. So it was good conver, good opportunities to brainstorm how to shift that conversation or how to stop, how to stop something that's negative. This has been really interesting to facilitate and observe. I think it's, we have some really good information. We have some information, all of it is good information. Some of it has been really helpful to see where we need to focus and emphasize, and others have been really kind of, just things like, so there are some kiddos who really are like, the classrooms are really bright. There are, you know, it's just interesting stuff that kind of comes through. So the, the Climate and Culture Committee will come back together and review where to go next after, after the final, the final groups have met. So next week, there are a number of celebrations. So May is the kickoff of Mental Health Awareness Month. So the Painesville Wellness Initiative is going to be inviting partnerships together throughout the community. So Painesville area schools, the city of Painesville, the ministerial staff, the Centricare, Public Health, Stearns County Public Health to really work on continuing the, the process to bring the Bounce Back Project into Painesville. And so they were targeting May as a kind of launch and a kickoff. So again, the Bounce Back Project, the, the really, the tagline for them is to promote health through happiness. So really kind of a whole well, a well-rounded being of a person. So I'm excited to see where that goes. Friday is May 6th, which is, Friday, May 6th is Food Service Appreciation Day. So shout out to all our food service workers. And next week is obviously the first week of May, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. So a shout out to all of our teachers for the first week of May. So those are, that's my administrative report today.
Do we usually put our student representatives in this meeting too? We're just not on that.
They usually are.
Yeah.
Yep, they usually are.
I'll go to it.
Student representatives.
Yeah, I was ready to go, forgot about it.
No, humans know.
Well, for sports tonight, baseball's against BB here. And then softball is in Melrose tonight. And then track is, is in BB for their first track meet, a real one.
Oh, they had an indoor one.
Yeah.
First outdoor one.
Um, for sad, we've been getting ready for our spring events. We're just planning those. And we did have an Easter activity with the third years, but we didn't say that yet. And that's pretty much it for that spring. Oh yeah, Student Council, we're also preparing for spring activities. And then also, we're getting ready for the elections for officer positions.
Yeah, you're gonna figure out who's replacing me next year.
Ooh.
Hopefully it's a good one, right? Well, prom is May 7th, so that's pretty exciting. There's gonna be a band concert on May 16th and a choir concert on May 9th, so you should stop on by and check it out. So FFA, I was just talking to Ben Bugby and he told me their final scores. I can, so Ben himself got second in Extembary Speaking. The Parliamentary Procedure Team got fifth place. And of course, Ben is a star agro businessman, and he said he's had been interviewed three times already, and it may be in the Star Tribune. So that's how it goes for him.
Yeah.
I'm gonna keep talking about Ben Bugby. First speech, he went to State, he did not place, but he still went there, so that's pretty cool. We were at Eastview High School in Apple Valley. And lastly, NHS. So we just finished our Connect for Love exchange. And so we collected donations of old board games, books, card games, flashcards, et cetera, because Amy Joel Gabi let us know that many of her English learners did not even have a simple card game to play. And we also took cash donations from our bake sale, and we used all of that to go to Goodwill and Walmart and just pack up more stuff for the kids. We brought the donations into their Media Time and had them go through them one by one and pick it out. They could either have one puzzle, one board game, or a book and a treat from the, well, I suppose it's magnify financial now, but they donated us a ton of their old credit union merchandise, which was awesome. We also received donations from the churches, the Catholic Church, the Lutheran Church, and the E-Free Church. And they were incredibly generous, so thank you to those guys too. And so every kid went home with a prize, and we even had extras. So all of that is going back in the community center this week.
Okay, thank you.
That's awesome. Very cool, thank you.
Any committee or organizational reports that need to be discussed or have topics?
Can't remember the name of our committee.
Safe schools?
Safe schools, or
Safe from to schools.
Safe from to schools did meet.
Yep.
And are progressing, they should have something to present soon, but basically talking about each area of town and how kids get to school and what are the safest ways to get to school. And for instance, how do they get here from Willgo Estates? If they walk or take their bikes? Do we need to put a pedestrian bridge over the bridge or over the river? Do we need to route them around 55? So a lot of those things are being discussed, and especially a lot of discussion around the elementary school. There's so much activity. So they're still working on that, unless, Janelle, if you have something more to say?
Nope, that's a pretty thorough. Some of the things that I think I was surprised by during that meeting is some things that you think might be really simple. As a, for instance, putting in a school zone, a school speed zone on Highway, Highway 55, where we come into town. We thought that was a pretty simple solution, and the highway department was very clear that it's not really that easy because of the way the, the highway has been structurally built and whether it's, so it just was, it was a really good opportunity to hear why some things that might seem pretty simple just really are not quite as simple as, as you think they might be, so. But it is, it is progressing nicely.
Yeah, the big, the big concern about is 55 over here where there's two crossings by the Catholic Church and then down.
Fourth Street and?
Yeah, I can't remember the, anyway.
Yeah.
And we thought, well, just make that 25 miles an hour. Well, it's, it's designated as a rural highway or something. It's, it's how it's been designated, and they can't do that. They have to keep it, you know? So it's, hopefully we can come up with some solutions.
Absolutely.
Because all that was put in long before there was anything over here, so it's.
Right. Yep, and that's part of more of a 10-year plan on a highway map than it is like a couple of years and get it done, so. Yeah. And then C, the C general meeting. Jake was able to be there in person. I hopped on virtually for a little while. Anything that you want to highlight from the?
It wasn't very informative. I mean, it's the end session, I was at the Capitol yesterday, heard the same thing. And so there's a big difference between the Senate GOP education bill, which includes the Parents' Bill of Rights, which the House does not want to touch. So if anything gets done, it might be a surprise, we'll see. We've got about less than 20 days left, so, and then I'll be back at the Capitol on the 19th as the House chaplain for the day. So we'll see what we can get done there, so.
Thank you.
You also move on to old business and start with A, policy review, second reading.
Yep, so the, the policy review, oh, I'm gonna come down here. There has not been any additional comments since the policies were, were presented. So my recommendation would be to consider approval as presented.
For motion to approve policies 401, 402, 403, 404, 406, 7, 8, 10, 12, 13, and 706.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Cheryl, second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say no? Carry. New business, class of 2022.
Alright, you will see the class of 22 recommended for graduation. Yeah, look at that, sign your name, right? I know how that goes.
There be on there.
That'd be a rude awakening. So we'll take it off. So that is the recommended graduation list, provided everything is complete at the end of the year. What is the total number in that class? Oh my gosh.
I think I counted 75.
75? I did not count, Maggie. I was just curious.
I was wondering too.
Looking for a motion to approve bonus for the class of 2022. Motion from Rick?
I'll second.
Second from Megan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no? Carry. B, proposed request on leave of absence.
So a little bit of history and kind of, Amy Jo did a nice job kind of laying out some of the considerations and things to be looked at. We did take a look at registration for the foreign languages. And last year, so we looked at two different pieces. One is the, is the middle school and the other is the secondary. Last year, we had, at the middle school level, there were 58 participants in the foreign language. Amy Jo referenced a, an exploring or a global cultural studies. The intent there was hopefully to engage some, some sixth graders. That would have brought the participation level up to 96 at the middle school level. The high school level, the, the participation last year, so that, I guess that would be this current year that we are in right now, is 113. And for next year, there are 59 students registered for foreign language throughout the course of the year. So as you can see, our, our foreign language certainly has not, it has not rebounded or come back or had the level of interest that was recommended or those, it maybe hoped for. I do know that there have been a number of, of meetings between, between David, Dave Wilkie and Amy Jo Gabi about the red, about the, the program, about making requirements for grade levels to have foreign language. And this, because of those numbers, the recommendation remained to, to carry through with what was proposed last spring. If you will, if you recall, last spring, this was discussed. There was not a discussion of changing the ELA or the EL complement in either years of recommendation. So what happened then, part of what has been, I guess, an unintended consequence or a natural byproduct of is when you have somebody that was available, then what we did do is we had Amy Jo going in and providing some of the, some of the MTS interventions. If you remember, I talked earlier about the hire that we were hoping to have last fall that we weren't able to secure. So that position has been, has been piecemealed together. And, and Amy Jo did provide a portion of those services. There was discussion around providing the EL service and intervention in tandem when, when it made sense for some of the kiddos that needed that same level of intervention. So the, the data that I have, and I, I just pulled the information from our MARS reports. I'm not, and I've, I didn't look at a schedule that was presented to me also in, I in February. But I did just pull our information from our, from our MARS reports to take a look at the course of the last few years, if, if you're interested in where those numbers are. We are at 18 students this year, and we've got a, as Amy Jo talked about, in the leveling system, we've got nine students that are Level 1, and that, that's based on their access score. So that's their level of, of fluidity with English. And it really is a, a pretty consistent, it's actually, it's not their access score, I'm sorry, it's their WIDA score. But what that does is that gives kind of that indicator of how much service. So we have nine students that are currently a Level 1. We have four students that are a Level 3 and two students that are, are Level 4. So then that's obviously the progression of highest need to less service support within that, within that continuum. So based on the fact that there was not a lot of, of substantial change, I did carry forward the recommendation that the board had approved last spring as a recommended a .5 reduction of that position to be a .5 EL, which is maintaining the, the structure and the component that it has been. So is this where we can ask questions and have discussion?
Yep.
So I, I agree, that's how it was presented last year was based off of, in my understanding, was based off of the foreign language classes being taught and learning the new information about what's happening in the elementary school with the EL students. I, I think it's great that we're doing this. And when I look at the data, that's a lot of students who have a demonstrated need. And my question was like, in an ideal world, you, you have laid out, you know, Level 1, 30 to 50 minutes, four to five times a week, and you take that times the number of students, are we underserving this population? And that's where I have, where my concern comes from our strategic plan. We talk about DEI work. We talk about serving all students. And this is a population that probably needs more support than less. And that's where my concerns come in. I would just want to make sure the most vulnerable students have what they need. And so, and we didn't necessarily, we didn't talk about that last year. Or if we did, I don't recall it. And so for me, learning this information, it, that changes my perspective on the need.
Well, I think too, kind of going off of yours, Maggie, when we look at the spreadsheet, back when you guys were talking about it last, or last spring, there was only eight kids. There's 18 kids now, and she's having to do interpreting, translating. And she has way more on her plate than one person should have on her plate. And so then to reduce it. And she has way more on her plate than one person should have on her plate. And so then to reduce it, I really think we need to look at that.
And as I recall too, um, you know, last year, yeah, the, the, the conversation was that the secondary uh, foreign language classes was what was really the point five that was being re- reduced. Um, I, I don't think that we're changing that idea that the point five secondary would need to be reduced based off of the class sizes, but on the flip side, to have conversation in regards to what the, you, what we're, we're at currently and where we're gonna be, where potentially it could be in the future. Um, the, the, the growth of the population, um, you know, my concern would be that we're setting ourselves up to a year from now needing the position back. You know, that would be my concern.
When you look at the data from Minnesota, it's, uh, from the Minnesota State Demographic Center, um, currently right now, or at that time, this report was written, the population was seventy-nine percent non-Hispanic and that, um, population grew by like one percent. The Hispanic population grew by like eighteen percent and we know that, I mean, you can look at any demographic data. That is how we're moving and the same thing like long-term. I think as well, like for teachers, if you have students in your class that are having trouble with the English language, how much time is that taking the teacher then to help that student, whereas if there's more services, it actually helps all students, not just this group, so.
I, I had the question earlier also about how many were new to the English language. And nine students and their families is a substantial number who are struggling with our language, let alone our curriculum. If they're not English speaking, they're probably not up to date with our curriculum also. So I'm struggling with eliminating someone who can help them through those first hurdles at this point.
I would also.
Oh, sorry. Go for it, sorry.
Cause I've been after this for, we moved here twenty-nine years ago and I've been after this for twenty-nine years. I've been saying someday, we're gonna have to face the fact that this community is gonna change in its structure. And it hasn't as fast as I thought it would. I thought it would have been faster. But over the men- last many years, I've worked with several Hispanic families in Painesville outside of the school and different program. And I'll tell you that if, if the word gets out that we are doing a really good job relating to Hispanic families, there will be more moving to town. We've got a network and it will get out there. And I think we need to make sure that we, however we do it, we bolster this part of the program, even though at this point it may seem like, well, we're not reaching that many. But if word gets out that we have a good program here and we're in need of more students. And I, and I'm, and I think we're in need of more cultural diversity, so I would love to see, um, us really emphasize this in a way that will get out into the public and I think it'll bear fruit in the future.
I, I think that's a good point, Rick, but it, it still, it still impacts me that we need to serve the students we already have here.
Right.
Not even just trying to get more here, which will happen if, if we do have a, a good place for them. Just servicing the families that we already have.
I mean, I work with families where there's parents that don't speak English and it's very difficult for me. Uh, luckily, we have some other adults who are Hispanic who work with it too, but, um, I know it, it's, it's a real challenge.
Now, the, the next challenge we're gonna come out and say is, you know, the, the idea, the concept of this, um, point five FTE cut last year as well as this year is, is on the budget end of things. You know, we do have a budget to keep in mind. Um, however, I think it just means we have to stretch harder to find, you know, find what, what we need.
I don't think this is where we cut it.
And I realize, I recognize that we didn't have these conversations before and so I do understand why it landed on the agenda, but now talking and knowing we have more information. The nine, was it nine students that are on level one? If the, if we wanted them to have the recommended services between thirty and fifty minutes, four to time, four to five times a week, that's almost a full-time day just with those students, so I'm actually questioning, are we completely underserving this population? And yes, I mean, it's gonna make, we're gonna have to make cuts. I understand that we're all gonna have to recognize that. We're gonna have to make them somewhere. I'm, I'm not willing to do it on the backs of our most vulnerable students.
And we have said time and time again that we're here to serve the students. And that we're not going to make cuts that will hurt the students.
So with that, we'll just move out past B, um, and move on to C, termination of shared services contract with BBE.
Uh, so the, um, Steve Guzzi, who was our custodian for, um, that was serving us and BBE, has resigned. Um, and so due to that resignation, um, we, I, it is my recommendation that we would obviously terminate the contract. I, I think it was a challenging role for somebody who knew both school districts. Um, and I think having somebody who doesn't know either of them very well in that role would be even more incrementally difficult, so um, my recommendation is to terminate that shared services contract. Um, and I think the, the question and the consideration that needs to become, what does the board, what is the board's wishes for replacement of that position?
I'm just curious, what did Steve all have to say? I mean, it was incredibly difficult, I know. He had said with that, did he have any more insight as how it functioned? I mean.
It's his, his observation, um, is that it is not, it's not doable, um, as two, as one position in the two school districts, um, because there are, and even with our, our lead model, that lead model is, is really beneficial. Um, and it, and it really does provide a point person for each of our buildings, but there are, there are too many times where when something happens or it's a substantial, um, we, they just finished a building project, we're moving into a building project. Those are things that were just unmanageable in the big, in the big picture. Um, he was, this was a di- very difficult decision for Steve. Um, he had a great opportunity, but he also just recognized that he just, it, it was not, it was not feasible long-term.
I had a chance to stop, talk to Steve on Monday and we had quite a long chat and he doesn't feel that there is a, a way to have one person run both areas.
I can't imagine that either, just, you know.
Too many, too diff- too many different ages in buildings and too many buildings and too many discrepancies, too many differences in it, the, the drive.
Yeah, absolutely.
And he said, he just doesn't feel that it's a doable thing.
And I'm glad we tried it.
Yeah.
I think it was important to try it and then evaluate and that's what we're doing and that's the feedback. My question is then what is it a full-time position? Like you said, we have to make a decision what that position is. Now is it back to a full-time position or is it like, I wonder, I don't know, did he give any feedback on it really is, does need to be a full-time position? Um, he did not. I didn't, I didn't ask, um, primarily because I knew that it was no longer gonna be a shared contract. Um, so his, his amount of time here is a point six. I think what you'll run into again is that, um, when there are things that go and he's not here, how is that going to be, or that individual is not here? How are those decisions going to be made and, and things like that? So right now, we, we don't need to decide what his, or sorry, what the contract will be for.
Future state now.
Future, we do. Um, I, we, we have no one as of Friday, so I do need a decision about how to post that. Because otherwise we don't have a, we don't have a director of buildings and grounds, which is significantly concerning to me as we move into our HVAC project.
Well, a year ago, we, we moved to a half-time position with two building supervisors. Is that the terminology we use with this?
With a shared position.
Yeah, with a shared position. I just wonder how this will affect if we wanted to go full-time, how's this gonna affect the two that we've already have.
Right, yeah.
Come up, we, we came up with a system that was kind of that pyramid system and.
Yeah, I think the, the individuals that we have serving in that capacity, um, that has also been of benefit to, um, when we talked about laying out structures and laying out, um, routines, having processes, those two point people have been really pivotal. Um, I, I think that, you know, one of the recommendations that I, I had looked at for a reduction was, um, a, a point five person in the pack. Um, so, you know, there, there is some cost savings there, um, that was anticipated from the overarching budget. Um, so that, that could, that will get it closer to a full-time from a budget neutral. Again, we're coming back to the budget discussion of, um, any of the areas that have been talked about or looked at, uh, thus far, are going back to the table, uh, which is really going to impact our, our budget discussions. Is there somebody currently on staff that would be qualified to be interim, so that we could spend some time like dissecting this person? I, I'm just worried about making a decision right now, not having enough details on, should it be? Like, that was a great point that you raised, Rick, like what happens to those to employees who have been promoted per se?
Yep.
How, you know?
The other question I would have is, is right now, when we move into the PAC, Matt Dickhausen took over a lot of responsibilities for the PAC. Um, is that, is that something that really, he's not here, but have we overburdened him with details down there that could be shared with somebody else? Is that a?
As a for instance, I can speak to just, um, when, you know, we've been talking through, um, the, the roof, for example. Um, without Steve being here full-time, Matt absolutely took a lot of that, um, a lot of those calls, a lot of that intervention. Part of it is that's his natural, his wing, his area, so of course that's, he's there and a point person. But he certainly did field a lot of that communication. Um, and, and I, I would expect, you know, in, in planning, we've been, we've had a couple of planning meetings at the, um, elementary as well. Um, we're really looking at Gary as to, you know, how do we, as we move forward because he's there. And so I really do expect he's gonna have some natural, like, he'll have more just naturally because of the project that's at hand. So to answer your question, yes, I do think there are things that fell to him. Do I think they would be long-term? They wouldn't necessarily have to be. Um, but I think that's also, you know, Matt really owns his space.
Right.
You know, and, and I think that there's something to be said about, I mean, he.
But even if there was somebody who was underneath him, I don't know in what area he would, I, I mean, there's a lot of scheduling that goes on down there now with tournaments going on and, and making sure somebody's there every, every weekend or, you know, I just don't know, I'm just trying to think of, there's more work that's down there that we're getting added to that could be put in a different position somehow.
And that, and, and that could be funded possibly through, you know, through some community ed.
Right.
Funding as well, if it was more of a scheduling or a, yeah.
Yeah, could that person kind of be like point six for us and then whatever for the community ed?
Sure.
Do you feel kind of that?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I need to talk with Matt and we have to break the budget.
But that's where I think we go back to what Maggie's saying is, is there someone that we can have in the interim?
Yep.
Fulfill that role until we kind of make a decent.
I, I would be, I could reach out, um, you know, I can, I can reach out to, I've got a person in mind that I could reach out to about an interim opportunity. Um, and then I, you know, if there's any, um, retired, I don't know if there's anybody that's, that's been here or that, not necessarily here, but that has done this role, that's retired, that could take it on a short term. Um, but again, knowing, I, my hesitation there, not hesitation, but my focus around this spring is really around that HVAC project at the elementary. We really need that to be, um, it, we need a pulse on that, you know, um, so making sure that that happens as well.
But is that something that we could, you know, put the interim person in and then our next board meeting, come back with some ideas and kind of come up with a plan and then vote on it at our next.
I think if we do an interim, I would like to just have it be until like the next fiscal year, so that we can.
Okay.
Cause then, it's really hard in my opinion to take somebody and say, do this for two weeks and then, just kidding. So let's, let's give them, if, if that's the direction we're gonna go, which I'm fine with. I mean, I, I think we can, you know, I, I, I can work with, um, I'll have a conversation and see what, um, how that goes, but, um, and then we can make the post and hire for next school year or starting July one, and then hopefully there can be some more of that position. Cause one of their roles could be to truly evaluate what the need is, you know, that we would know what is it a full-time position and it might be, it, it definitely is and plus we'll know better what our budget is. Um,
For this right now, we're just terminating the shared service contract with BBE.
Okay.
Um, so let's just look at, take a motion, uh, for the termination of that contract.
Make a motion.
Motion from Jake.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Carried.
Can we add into that motion if, if, with, sorry, I should have done that before you finished, so, um, to, um, to appoint an interim for the rest of the year?
Um,
Cause I, I'm concerned about.
Can we add a, can we, I don't know, can we add a, do we, we, I don't know that we really need to, I don't know that that's our.
As long as, as long as we have documentation and I guess the, the video is gonna be off, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that's our, our place to, to manage that at that point in time.
Well, it is because it, it's.
Um, it, it would be a, it would be a contract we would have to approve.
You'll have to approve a contract.
Yep, yep, but at that point in time.
And you'll have to prove it outside of the structure of a point six.
I don't, I don't know that it'd be a normal place for us to have a conversation with you in a board meeting of how to move forward with that, of, of looking for that position. Um, but, but the, yeah, if we, we.
I'll take care of it.
Yep.
Okay, what, um, so I'm assuming at BBE, they're having the same conversation, that they're, they're filling it full-time. They're filling it full-time and they've already, have they already, um, agreed to.
They've terminated it.
Terminated, okay. I just wanna make sure that we're both on the same page.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And these, uh, support staff employment policies.
Okay, so, um, the support staff employment policies, a couple of things of note. Um, that this, so this group is, um, our admin assistants, it's our, so our admin assistants at each of the buildings, it's our, our community ed staff. Um, their groups, um, their starting wage was, was low as were like our paraprofessionals. So what we did is, is we, um, and community, you guys let me know if you wanna come in and, and make comment here, but, um, what we did is we really took a look at that starting wage again and made it comparable to our other, um, our other, like our paraprofessional group and then look, looked at that structure, having consistent distribution of steps, um, took, took a look at longevity, um, and tried to make them as a little bit more consistent. Um, but again, the, the biggest area of emphasis within this policy handbook was around that, the, the pay scale and the wage. And making that more competitive from a starting perspective.
Did they have longevity before?
It was a like thirty, like, um, twenty-five years and a one-time payment, uh, at twenty-five year. And so it was, we did a little bit of a restructure there, um, and made it a little bit more com- comparable to what some of our other contracts are. Um, but also acknowledged that sooner than like twenty-five years.
I, I didn't remember seeing that in the contract before.
Yeah, yep, it was in there. It's, it, it just changed the structure.
Thank you.
Yep. I appreciate the desire to make things more uniform versus having such drastic differences between contracts, so.
And that, I think that was the, somewhat the intent to cross the border as we went and, and, and we'll continue to look at that, those structures as we move forward and, um, and, and taking positive changes to those structures, uh, across the board. Looking for a motion to approve the changes to twenty-one, twenty-three support staff employment policies.
So moved.
Motion from Rick.
I'll second.
Second from Megan. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Carried. Resolution to adopt HRAS A Plan Administrator.
Alright, so, um, there's two things that I, I, well, let me, the most simple thing here is our, um, Viva provider was bought out by a different company, so we had further and further was bought out by, doesn't matter.
It's a W.
It doesn't matter because, um, they would not pick up our Viva service, okay? So we had, we took a look at a couple of different providers and ultimately, um, went in conversation with, um, we had our, uh, the insurance committee talked a little bit about this. We also had conversation, um, with, um, internally about process and making sure that, um, we have the least disruption for our employees. And so, um, the determination was to move to the same, it's, it's, I call it Abibin, there's people that call it Ababin. I call it Avi Ben, there's people that call it Aba Ben, I don't know what the correct pronunciation is, but it's, um, it, that is the provider who we have had, it's also known as EBC, um, which is some of our flex benefits and our four oh three provider right now. So, um, this would streamline, we had to do something anyways. And so, um, we took a look at how to make this, um, as streamlined as possible for our individual employees. So this is a resolution, um, that is required by them, um, for us to make the transition.
We do need a roll call vote too.
Yep, that's, that's our resolution, so I figured roll call, so I look for a motion to adopt the resolution as intended. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Need a second, yeah, second from Megan, uh, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Can we, I asked the question first.
Yep, yep, sorry, go ahead.
Um, so just to clarify, it really didn't, you were able to negotiate that, not much changed, am I hearing that?
Uh, no dollars or anything changed, and employees, a lot of this is done on the backside.
Okay.
Um, the unfortunate part is that, like, um, an individual will get a different, and it would have happened anyways. Now remember, this would have happened anyways because Further was bought out.
Yes.
So, um, they would have had, they'll, they'll get a notice that their account is now managed by, um, Avi Ben EBC versus, um, Further. And so then there'll be different cards, and, and one of the things that we also talked through is, um, Avi Ben is their, their goal is to have, um, whoever, whatever flex spending or, um, savings mechanism you use, it's one card, which I think some of our employees are gonna be really happy about. Um, but I, we haven't promised that out yet, cause they weren't insured, assured of the timeline. Um, but it is, you know, there's, so they're also looking at ease of service and use for all of our employees, but every contribution, nothing dollar amount changed, nothing is going to, like, the, it doesn't, um, it, it doesn't change anything that's in our contract benefits, it's, it's purely the administration.
I guess I've looked at it as if your bank got bought out by another bank, your bank's comp, they would be like, wow, you're gonna, we're gonna take ten thousand transaction out of that and just say, no, it's.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep, yep.
Perfect.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Any other questions? All right, then we'll go to a roll call.
Rick?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And you?
Aye.
Let's pass. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar.
Okay, um, so as far as the school calendar goes, um, there are no changes from what was presented in, at the work session. Um, I've not received a lot of feedback from that either, but, um, so this is gonna be the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, we did have a lot of discussion about the, um, the end of this school year, and then how to plan for teachers and at, at the elementary in the fall. So there's a couple of things that, um, I did survey the staff, um, and it is, it's a relatively split vote, like, there's a, um, it was, it was literally fifty-fifty. Um, and then we had, um, a number of people who in their others said, yes, one day is adequate for us to do the planning, but does it really make sense to bring kids back on, on May thirty-first? And I get that, I really do understand that. Um, but I think, you know, and, and again, in continuing to look at, there's one more planning day. Um, so before I make a, a full-on formal recommendation to you that it is absolutely one day, I'd like to get through that one more planning day to see if there's any other pickups that I, that we encounter, but it's at this point, it's looking like the recommendation for this school year is going to be that one day, and that's what we've communicated thus far, so that we are giving parents time to start planning and look at that. Um, but, and then, as we move into fall, um, the reason I'm not making a, a recommendation in this calendar approval is because, um, there are some components of this plan that we really need to see how it truly does, um, um, how the project truly does progress. So for example, I would hate to tell staff that they can be back in their classrooms, and they could have a day in July and a day in August, and, and then here we find out we can't do that, you know? So I need a little bit more information as we work through. Um, it, it, it is absolutely going to be my recommendation to provide time in the fall. I don't know how much time until I know a little bit more about the way the project progresses. Um, so that's why you don't see a change on that calendar presented. So this is, is really the recommendation for the, for the approval of the calendar in its, um, just traditional twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
Looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
Second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no, carry.
So I have a question about that May thirty, how does that decision or when does that get made?
So I'll reach out to the board and let you all know, um, very, so be, again, we have plenty of calendar days for, um, and you'll notice like our, in, well, you'll notice on this one too. Um, the elementary is, and it was on our twenty-one, twenty-two calendar as well, that the elementary, we just made a decision that they were not in attendance on the first day because it was conferences, right? Um, but the calendar did not reflect, it did not call that out specifically. The calendars really align a lot for our, our instructional days that we enter into, um, into Mars. So if, as we do that, um, we could make that formal, like the formal change um, at the last board meeting in May, but we'll communicate that with families prior to. Um, but again, I wanna get through one more planning meeting and one more set of classrooms, um, to see if there's things that, that we need to be mindful of as, as we make that final determination this spring.
So then, what you're saying is, we will, if you go to this last planning meeting and find out that, okay, we do need to just not go back, or not go to school on that Tuesday, you will communicate that with families prior to us.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Approving it, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, yep, this, yeah, that, this, this process is, is a pretty formal, and again, knowing what the level of support and what the board asked of me is to reach out and find out how we can do this the most um, efficiently and effectively. Um, so that's, that's where I'll make that final kind of recommendation. Again, we'll have a work session that we could have discussion about it, um, on May tenth. Um, but, um, again, that, I'd like a little bit more information before making that final determination. And then I'll
I just wanna make sure that the family's know prior to us meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Absolutely. Yep.
So, and review upcoming meetings. Um, one thing I would just comment is, if we want to add a, or if you feel the need to add a, um, committee meeting uh, with the administration, the, the um, negotiation administrators group to, to discuss the future of the, uh, position, of the building grounds position.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you already involve, uh, involve those from the board for that board's view of the, the future on that position and in regards to how you like that.
Okay.
Maybe just, uh, be an option to reach out to us if, if you feel the need to on that end of things. What's that?
Oh, I must be looking at the wrong one too.
Looking at an email?
No, I, I was looking at the old agenda with the April ninth, I know you updated it, yep, that's good.
Anything else, any other questions? For motion to adjourn.
Move the board to now adjourn.
Motion from Jake.
Second.
Second from Megan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no, carry.